Here we go. I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission meeting for September 5th, 7:00 P.M. We have no secretary this evening, so Ms. Holman will play secretary. If you may please, call the role.
Member Broll?
Present.
Member Moody?
Here.
Member Naylor? I understand, Miss, uh, Member Stokes is out, um, Member Yulinski is out, Chair DeHunt?
Yes, here. Moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the agendas before us for September 5th, 2024.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support, Ms. Holman, please call.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Member Naylor?
Yes.
Member Broll?
Yes.
Chair DeHunt?
Yes. Like to open the first hearing of the public. If you have something that you wish to bring up in reference to the item, uh, in, uh, item A, the smoke shop on Nine Mile, we ask that you please hold your comments for that time, but you can speak on anything else. And you have three minutes. The floor is yours, so we are open. Does anybody wish to be heard? If you could please put your name on the, hopefully there's a sheet of paper and a pen, Mr. Myron?
Yes, there is. Hi, Gary Myron, East Point resident for thirty-five years. Anyways, my concern is on the Oakwood Senior Living property, the container housing. Uh, it all looks pretty good, and my concern is as long as it doesn't look like a, a shipping box, steel box. Um, it says it's gonna have, uh, wood stained siding, but as long as it's like that, I think it'd probably work out good. Seems a little cramped, but it'll probably work. Anyways, that's it.
Does anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Um, I just have a couple of, um, observations from your last meeting on August 1st. Um, there's kind of a discrepancy between a gas station that you guys reviewed back in April of 2023. It was a Marathon gas station. Uh, there was gonna be a drive-through with it, but the owner had said he was flexible. He would maybe put a Jimmy John's instead of a drive-through. Um, it's just the, the special land use review was quite drastically different than what the review was for the Sheets gas station that was reviewed this year. Um, there was an issue supposedly with the zoning of the Ten Mile Marathon gas station. At the time the application was received, the existing land use was, uh, B3, which was general business. The future land use was regional commercial. And at that time, you had been talking about changing the zoning for that area to make it, um, neighborhood mixed use, which would not allow a gas station. That didn't actually, that ordinance didn't get changed until May 9th of 2023. Um, the, this gas station at Ten Mile was denied on April 6th, the Planning Commission, and then, um, denied April 25th at City Council. So I'm not understanding, like, when we're approving things, what zoning rules do we go by? Um, why would we go by something that had not been approved by City Council yet? Um, again, with the special land use review, quite different. The Ten Mile station, um, that talked about, uh, was hazardous and disruptive to the community due to noise and odor pollution. Uh, twenty-four seven hours of operation would disrupt neighboring residents. McKenna recommended limiting hours of operation for that gas station. Uh, they referenced, uh, that the U.S. is moving toward being carbon, carbon neutral by 2050, and developing a new gas station contradicts those efforts. New gas station does not improve the community and is a detriment to global climate change. In addition, they said there were too many gas stations in the area. There were two across the street from this property. Um, the Sheets review mentions none of these things. Uh, it's like, almost like Sheets was not considered as a gas station, although for special land use review, you're looking at just the gas station part of it. Um, another issue, um, was that we just changed the gas station ordinance between gas stations and residents. Used to be three hundred feet from property line to property line, and it was changed in June of this year to hundred feet. Uh, McKenna stated that the old ordinance was too onerous and was changed to be in line with the state. But from what I understand, the state has no regulations. You can, it's up to each city. If you want to have it fifty feet away from a resident, that's fine. If you want to have it six hundred feet, it's up to, um, the city. The only thing that you can't do is totally prohibit the establishment of a land use in the presence of a demonstrated need for that land use. I do not think that a gas station is a demonstrated need anywhere in the city of East Point, let alone a nine-mile road where we decided to put a Sheets. Last issue, when you are doing the site plan checklist review, the review team is supposed to include the police chief. At the August 1st meeting, Chairman DeHunt asked Ms. Holman, has the police department had any thoughts or have they shared any feedback with you? Ms. Holman stated, we've not heard anything negative. We've involved everybody in the whole process, and there's not been any concerns that have been raised. My understanding from communicating with Chief Haines is he was not asked for any input on the Sheets project. And I don't understand that because that he is supposed to be part of the review team for the site plan of, uh, of a new business. And especially in light of the residents' concerns about safety and security and traffic.
Thirty seconds.
Why would we not have involved the police chief? My concern is not with the Planning Commission. You guys do a fabulous job, but you are only able to do your job if you are getting complete and objective information from the city planner. And I feel that that is not happening, that did not happen in these cases with these gas stations. And you can, you know, you can only work with the information that you're giving, given, and I really see that as a problem going forward with other projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the first hearing of the public, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support?
Member Naylor?
Yes.
Member Moody?
Yes.
Uh, Member Broll?
Sting.
Chair DeHunt?
Yes. Moving on to the next item, the public hearing, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support, Ms. Holman?
Commissioner Broll?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Chair DeHunt?
Yes. Um, Ms. Brozchevsky or Ms. Smith Wolf or Mr. Myers, who is going to present this?
I will present this chair.
Thank you.
Uh, so the applicant before you this evening is at, located at one seven eight five zero Nine Mile to be considered to open a smoke shop, which is a retail for hookah and vape products. Um, the location is in the MU2 Main Street Mixed Use District, which in the most recent zoning ordinance update was changed to, uh, smoke shops are changed to a special land use in MU2 because of the sensitivity of the product with the addictive nature of nicotine products um, and the vulnerable populations such as youth. Um, so with that, there is the special land use designation, and then there's also two buffering, distance buffering requirements with smoke vape shops. The first one is that it is five hundred feet from any private or public school, and second, that it is at least one thousand feet from any other tobacco or smoke shop. Um, the applicant is here this evening to address any questions that the commission has, and, um, once we review the special land use request, we will then review the site plan.
Does the applicant wish to be heard?
Uh, hi.
Please, please take the podium, please, and write your name down.
Okay, um, my name is Ahad Ahmed, and, uh, we were planning to open a smoke shop and slash convenience store, really. It's going to be open every day. Um, we're mainly going to, uh, serve like adults. We want to stay away from, uh, you know, selling anything to the youth, and, uh, we don't want to create a nuisance in the community in any way possible. Um, mainly the lights, uh, we want to make sure, because we know that exterior lights is a problem in East Point. This store is facing like the milestone, um, so hopefully it won't hit anything residential. And a few other concerns, there's still like the site plan is being worked on, but, um, hopefully it'll be cleared up today. Um, okay.
Thank you. Does anybody in the community wish to be heard on this? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, let's get a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Oh, please write. If you would please write your name down on the sheet of paper there.
Sure. Matthew Hall. I represent our property owners where their proposed vape shop is. Um, speaking on behalf of the property owners, they've owned the property for approximately fifteen years. Um, they're always current in their taxes. Um, they've worked, uh, readily with the vape shop owners who have, uh, acknowledged to us that they have successfully opened, uh, four or five different vape shops in different communities and had no issues doing so. Uh, with any, um, I understand there's some, uh, landscaping requirements and foliage that need to be addressed. Uh, the property owners are more than willing to do that, and, uh, if that needs to be done, uh, we would ask that it be set as a condition upon approval. Thank you.
Hello, my name is, uh, Danell Williams, and I have been assisting, uh, the tenant with, uh, her special land use application. Uh, one of the important things, as Mrs. Smith, uh, addressed, was the youth. And what we did was, we decided to, um, have a standard operating procedure where each employee will be trained on according to keeping tobacco away from you. Uh, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Behavior on Physical Health Guide, and it spells out how to check for ID if a person is, look, appears to be under twenty-seven years old, then ask for identification, uh, put it in your hand, look at it, make sure it's that person. So, um, we're gonna be adamant that they, uh, make sure they take the necessary precautions to prevent the youth from, um, uh, purchasing tobacco. And if you would like to see this, I can pass it around. And also, we did some canvassing in the area, and so we, uh, got some signatures from people nearby on Schroeder Street, on, uh, Normandy, and, uh, the tenant next door, uh, one of the workers there at the, um, the shop, the auto shop next door. And if you would like to see that, I can pass that along as well.
You can just give it to Ms., uh, Smith.
Smith.
So make sure it gets.
Right now or at the end?
At the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Anyone else? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Ms. Holman, please call.
Commissioner Broll?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Chair DeHunt?
Yes. Ms. Smith, let's jump into it. Item A, new business.
All right, so the item is to consider a recommendation to council in regards to the special land use for, to operate a smoke shop, a retail facility with hookah and vape products, um, in the MU2 Main Street Mixed Use District at one five eight, one seven eight five zero Nine Mile. Um, in terms of the special land use review criteria, again, it's the same seven standards that we always apply to a special land use. Um, we do find that as a retail shop, it is harmonious with the zoning ordinance and the master plan, uh, so long as everything in the site plan is addressed adequately. Um, we did hear from the applicant just now about additional standards to protect health, safety, and welfare of the community from any nuisances. Um, but if the commission does still have further questions, I would recommend asking those to the applicant. And if we feel that any additional measures need to be taken beyond screening of someone who appears to be twenty-seven years old or younger, um, I would recommend doing so. Beyond that, I don't have any further points to add.
Would you mind? So I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm looking at your hours of operation, and I'm hoping that this is an error, because it says nine AM to one AM.
Um, some of the, like, other smoke shops that we've ever, or others, like, restaurants as well that are, uh, opened by our management are open until that late, but it is depending on the area. And I do understand that East Point has a lot of young families, so, uh, would it better it be earlier, like, before midnight?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that, well, that takes me to my second point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is this going to be just a retail facility, or are you going to have chairs in there where people can?
No, it's going to be retail, basically, uh, even the hookah products that are bought in the store have to be taken to go. Uh, nothing can be burned, or even like vape mods that are electrical can't really be fixed inside. I don't believe the FDA really allows us at all, yeah, for any smoking to take place inside.
Okay. Um, team, any questions?
I have a question for the applicant. You had mentioned that it was a smoke shop, and then you said, actually, it's more of a convenience store. Can you, uh, expand on that?
Yes, okay, so the smoke shop will also have like exotic snacks, which just means, uh, snacks for international snacks, bought at, even found at international markets. Uh, but they're really cool, different flavors, hard to find also, so, uh, mainly for people who don't smoke, I kind of want it to be known in the community that we'll have like regular snacks or water or over the counters like Tylenol, and open till midnight is good for, especially like an area with not a lot of stores around. Um, something nearby, for emergencies, yeah.
Is this, is this your first, uh, smoke shop?
This is the first business, yeah, that I'll be managing, although, mm.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Myers, do you have any questions? Okay. Well. So let's move on to, uh, sorry. Consider motion to approve a site plan. Ms. Smith, would you read your recommended motion?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
As part of the condition, would you like to clarify that it closes before midnight?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, so then I can propose a motion?
Please.
Motion to recommend approval of the appro, of the proposed special land use for a smoke shop at one seven eight five zero Nine Mile. The parcel ID zero two one four three two one three zero 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 four, as well as zero zero five and zero zero six, based on the findings of back in the planner's review letter dated August 30th, 2024, with the condition that the applicant, um, must close before midnight. They must add a note to the site plan specifying their process for verifying the age of customers when purchasing tobacco and nicotine products, and that the license be revoked if the applicant sells vape products to persons under twenty-one years old. And when I sell, say sells vape or products, I mean vape nicotine products to persons under twenty-one years old.
Vape and tobacco products versus vape nicotine products?
Tobacco and nicotine products.
I need tobacco or vape.
So is a hookah pot or whatever it is, is that considered like a vape or is it a tobacco, or what is it?
Um, could I?
Please.
Okay.
So, it, we'll have vapes, and also the hookah products can either be made as like orange heads, um, to order, or also the containers of tobacco flavored. Tobacco is basically, um, the same thing that's in cigarettes, but it's conserved in molasses so that people burn it on their own water pipe at home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. DeHunt, may I, may I make a suggestion? Do you, I'm, I would prefer to have a specific time, like before midnight, meaning they can close at eleven fifty-nine.
I don't know what.
Time you thought was reasonable, but I would, I would add that personally, I would add a specific timeline.
Thoughts, guys? I'm thinking ten would be a reasonable time.
Chair?
Please.
Can I say something? So, um, this is not just a smoke shop, it's also a convenience shop, and I want to take in consideration that other convenience shops in the areas don't have a time limit. So just wanted you to understand that perspective.
But what is the majority of the business going to be? Is the majority of the business going to be tobacco products, or is it going to be convenience?
Um, mainly, sorry. Mainly, I believe it's fifty-fifty. I've been working for a few years in these stores, and, um, throughout the day, people are buying all, like, snacks also and, um, and tobacco products, and our sales come in from both evenly.
I don't know now.
It's also, um, there's a lot of gifts in there too, kind of like a souvenir shop, not just stuff like to use for smoking. Sometimes we have like flasks, you know, decorative, um, just, yeah, mainly, it's smoke themed, but it'll be just stuff that you can buy and gift with, so it could be of all things.
Do you think your business needs to be open until one o'clock in the morning?
No, I honestly believe midnight would be fair, but if, uh, you think eleven would be better, that's completely up to the count.
I mean, I don't want to be onerous, and if there is, if, if, I don't want to create a standard for something that's not appropriate, but.
Right.
I personally don't think you need to be open past eleven o'clock, but I, we need to follow and be consistent, so.
Yes.
Ms. Brozchevsky, what are you thinking? Since you opened this can of worms.
I just wanted to underscore that this is not just a tobacco shop, it is also a convenience retail location. And from my perspective, I think that people work different schedules. Some people work nights, some people work days, so it's hard to regulate business, um, based on a timeframe. I understand that you might see this as a nuisance and a sensitive product. We also heard from the applicant that they are abiding by state regulations that already regulate the product. Or a synonym or stress. I just want to put that perspective, thank you.
What time does McDonald's close? Is that, I mean, if it's germane to this conversation?
I believe around two AM, and Taco Bell also two AM.
All right, let's get some feedback here.
Well, I, what I would say is, if you can buy alcohol till two in the morning, you can buy, uh, extra cigarettes down the road until two in the morning, uh, actually, I don't know, maybe all day, twenty-four. I, I had the same question about like, why one o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
But I wasn't necessarily against it.
Yeah.
Chair, McDonald's drive-through is open till one.
One AM.
In East Point.
Ms. Naylor, thoughts?
I, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. Agree, there.
Just a quick question for the applicant, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry. Why did you pick one? What was, what was, uh, the decision process there?
For one, that was just honestly, like, the protocol, like, it was probably, uh, one for all the other stores, but honestly, for East Point, I do think that twelve o'clock is, is the best time for it to close. There's no reason to be open till after midnight, um, yeah.
If you're willing to do that, that would be perfectly acceptable.
Yeah.
Since you're standing there, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You had mentioned in your conversation about when you have orders. What, what is orders?
Okay, so, when people, when you have a hookah, you can either put on a clay head or an orange head. That's up to preference, of course, right? So, when you order, like, an orange head, I would have to make it, I would have to, or whatever employee or worker, they'll be top of the tobacco, it conserves itself, so nothing is expired or has to be checked, um. We would sprinkle it onto the orange and wrap it with foil and staple it, and, um, some people order two at a time, three, um, yeah, depending on party.
I haven't a clue what you're saying.
Right, I, I bet, it's new, it's a very new concept, I get it.
So, let me ask you this, when it comes to the orders?
Mm-hmm.
We, you're still under the same guidelines that the young lady mentioned earlier, that you would be looking in, in monitoring their identification?
Yes, because all of the employees now have to undergo an official process of training, and, um, before, that wasn't really in place. So, we do wanna make it clear that with any smoke shop, like, in, uh, at least in my control, that, um, all of us will make sure that they look at least, uh, twenty-seven years of age, and that they have to hold it horizontally in front of the camera, yeah. Thank you.
This is your business practice.
Yes, yep. Okay. I'm gonna sit down, thank you.
Alright, so are you promoting the motion to midnight, or one, or?
If the applicant is willing to say midnight, then I'd say we make it midnight. Burger box. Sound fair? Alright, Ms. Smith, can you include that it will close at twelve o'clock?
The motion did include to close before midnight. Is that adequate?
So, now we're revising it to midnight?
Yeah, to midnight.
Okay, so it shall close. Well, I guess, we, the wording was closed before midnight to allow for the discretion of the, if they decide they wanna change their business hours to a time before midnight, that, that would be acceptable, rather than out of obligation to be open until midnight.
Would the owners be able to change their time in the future? From the midnight to, if they see where something?
Earlier.
Business is booming, that they wanna change it to one? Or two, with the other business, or would they be locked into the twelve o'clock time?
If the motion includes until midnight, or close before midnight, then that would restrict their business license. Unless they came back to revise their special land use.
Mr. Aubrey?
Thank you, Chair, the, uh, the, the motion that's on the floor, as presented by, uh, Ms. Smith, uh, would adequately address the concerns that have been raised at this table, uh, with the language that, uh, the establishment is not to be open past four midnight.
So, just hypothetically, let's say, to Ms., um, I'm losing my mind, to Ms. Moody's point, if the business found that they needed to be open later because they were getting an inordinate amount of traffic, is that something that could be handled administratively, that they could go to the building department and state that their business from after tw, at twelve o'clock is just so great that they really would like to stay open past? Would that be something that could be handled administratively?
I don't believe so, if it's part of the motion, I think that they would have to essentially amend their site plan, or special land use, rather, and come back before the planning commission with a recommendation of the city council. Uh, but the city council could, once this gets to the city council stage, 'cause after the, uh, planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council, the city council would make further adjustments in, uh, these special land use, and if the city council believes that, uh, no time requirement is necessary, the city council has the ability to do that.
So, let's leave it at twelve o'clock, and if the city council wants to change it, they have that right? Does that sound fair? Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have support, or do we have somebody willing to make that motion? That Ms. Smith read so eloquently.
I motion to accept the consultant's motion regarding the smoke shop at one seven eight five zero nine mile.
We have the motion, do we have support?
Support?
We have motion and support, Ms. Holman, please.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Broll?
Yes.
Chair DeHunt?
Yes.
Welcome, city council's your next up. Moving on to item C. Consider motion to approve a site plan for Oakwood Housing.
Uh, Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, we still need to consider the site plan?
Oh.
For one seven eight five zero nine mile.
I'm sorry. Alright, item B. Consider site plan. Now, didn't we have some, this came in late, was that what I was told?
Um, the correct planning review letter, which we've already begun to review for the, uh, special land use, is dated August thirtieth, and you did receive a printed copy this evening. It was also included in the, uh, copy that was published online as part of the agenda. And then the engineering review letter was also provided to you this evening for this specific location.
Ms. Smith, can you, did the McKenna report change from what was in the electronic packet? I'm sorry, maybe you said that I...
Uh, it did not. The electronic packet does have the August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four review letter.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I see that we have a number of issues here from AEW. Specifically thirteen. As of yesterday.
Chair, would you like me to go over the engineering comments?
I would.
Okay, so on the screen is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. The comments from engineering are covered in the planning review letter, but they are also the following. Some of them are minor, such as include project summary of work being done, uh, point to the location on the aerial map. Cover sheet needs to be ordered differently. Um, they're also missing one of the sheets on the index, again, these are all very minor. The other item is the parking calculations, which we did address in the planning review letter. And the reasoning is to clarify the number of employees, to make sure that there is adequate parking. Uh, however, we know that it is an existing parking lot. And there will be seventeen off-street parking spaces. So, based on the size of the retail facility, there only require three spaces, so there's plenty. Um, so as long as there's a reasonable number of employees, we do not anticipate a problem. However, this should be clarified on the site plan. Another comment from AEW was to label the parking dimensions, label where the handicap spaces will be adding the appropriate dimensions for a barrier to the handicap space. That the evergreen trees proposed along nine mile be changed to deciduous, and in the planning review letter, we specify that it should be true deciduous, 'cause it's one per forty-foot frontage. And then, that the landscape maintenance procedures be included on the site plan. And that they show existing utilities, as well as the neighboring existing characteristics, which are all very standard, and, um, we've already requested be shown in the updated site plan. I can also go over the planning review letter, because we would like to discuss some additional points.
So, in your opinion, these thirteen issues really have to do more with the quality of the, um, blueprints? They're not, these are, these are blueprint issues, these are not facility or site plan issues, per se?
Correct, the only thing that would change the layout is the parking dimensions and the handicap spaces. However, there are enough spaces that if they have to remove two to make way for a handicap space, it would not impact, they would still meet their ordinance requirements for off-street parking. So, we do not ant, anticipate any significant changes to the site plan, and everything would be handled administratively.
So, does it even need to be said in a motion that changes to the parking, striping, or whatever the dimensions would be handled administratively, or is that?
In the planning review letter, we do recommend that all of the conditions outlined in the planner review letter dated August thirtieth, and in the engineer's letter are addressed administratively.
Okay.
So, it is included in that statement.
I think we're gonna ask you to read it. Because we like hearing your voice.
Okay, the motion that we, uh, propose is motion to approve the site plan for a smoke shop at one seven eight five zero nine mile. Parcel ID zero two one four three two one three oh zero zero four, as well as zero zero five and zero zero six, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting, and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review letter dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter, and based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance. Listed on the first play, page of the planning, uh, review letter is information that they will need to address before they receive final site plan approval. And we also propose that planning commission grant the following waivers. The first one is we recommend a waiver in which the street tree frontage plantings along nine mile, so two deciduous trees, will still be required. However, we recommend waiving the three deciduous trees and shrubs along Schroeder Avenue in lieu of evergreen trees being used as the parking lot screening. Or if planning commission prefer that a payment in lieu of plantings be made, that would be of the alternative. The second waiver is to waive the ornamental tree requirement. The third waiver is to waive the landscape architect's seal requirement, because the project is a reoccupancy, not a new construction, and there is minimal space for landscaping. And then four, that we waive the maximum off-street parking requirement to preserve the existing lot.
Chair, I'd like to make that motion, um, in the first item, I would like to make that it require a payment in lieu of planting. There were two or three options there, so a payment in lieu.
See, interestingly, I was gonna go the other way.
What were you gonna do?
I was thinking we should have some landscaping there, because it is the central business district. That's...
I'm fine with that, too.
And I don't often go that way.
You can't do that.
Thoughts, ladies? Landscaping?
Landscaping.
Okay, landscaping, yes, yeah.
Uh, Chair, I would like to clarify, the reason we do recommend this waiver is that the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the street is very narrow. It's not labeled on the site plan, although I believe it's between three to four feet, and they've already are using the space, the buffer between the sidewalk and the parking lot, as landscaping. And so, because the site context and the right-of-way at this specific location is narrow, it is not the best location to have those plantings, which is why we recommended the waiver, or the payment in lieu of landscaping.
And why, why is it not a good situation for the planners?
Uh, because it's so narrow right there, and it is a corner, so we already have to be, what, twenty-five feet from the intersection? And then, it's only three to four feet. Again, I'm at guessing, because it's not labeled on the site plan, but it is pretty narrow, so we don't wanna disturb the sidewalk. There are some species that, smaller trees that you can use, um, so long as the right-of-way, I believe it's four feet, so long as it is four feet, but again, I'm not sure that it, it does meet the four feet.
Alright, Mr. Broll, you won. So, payment in lieu of trees.
Okay. We have consensus, it sounds like, is that right?
Yes.
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 Okay, I made that motion.
Does anybody wish to second the motion?
Support.
We have motion and we have support, Ms. Holman?
I believe that was Commissioner Moody, or?
Uh, motion by Commissioner Broll.
Commissioner Broll.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Chair DeHunt?
Yes.
Now you get to go to city council. Alright, item C. Ms. Smith?
Okay, item C is to consider a motion of, 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 housing, and my colleague, uh, uh, for that.
Good evening, thanks for having me. We also have the applicant in the room, so Chair, whenever we would like to hear from the applicant, we have him in the room. Do you want me to do the introduction first?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so, this project is adj, adjacent to Grafton Townhouses on Nell's Avenue, um, so, close to nine mile, just a little off from nine mile, and it's within the medium-density R-two residential district. Um, and I'm very excited to present this project. My colleagues have been working a lot in this partnership with Oakwood Housing, so we're very excited to have you in the room. We all know that housing is well-needed in East Point, but also throughout the country. Um, and you guys, guess what? Our zoning ordinance made this project feasible for Oakwood Housing to come in and build, they're talking a bit more about their partnership, but to come in and build new, twenty-one new residential units for the city of East Point. Um, and it's so feasible because it's an automatically permitted use, so multifamily, um, a multifamily apartment is an automatically permitted use in the R-two medium residential density, um, zoning district. So, that was probably something that caught your attention and gave some attraction for new residential development in East Point. So, congratulations again on all of your hard work for that zoning ordinance, it's really paying off. So, let's go into the review summary, the applicant, um, MHT Housing is in the room. They seek to construct twenty-one two-bedroom apartments. They're cottage-style, accessory, like, compliant with the ADA, um, reg, federal regulations. The project site, as I said, is located, um, at the northern of the property. That currently houses a three-story Oakwood senior apartment building. The project also entails adding a ground-floor sunroom to the existing three-story apartment. Uh, MHT Housing is also partnering with PACE of Southeast Michigan, a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly. PACE, that's what PACE stands for, a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly, on this project, and in provide, and intends to provide independent senior-styled living, uh, units. Within the units, each resident will have their own bathroom and bedroom, a shared kitchen, indoor and outdoor living area. The units will be connected by barrier-free walkways, and will be built from enhanced container homes. And we have, um, my colleague here, zoning administrator Wolf, will show you what the container, what the homes look like. Um, these units will share several amenities with Oakwood Housing buildings, such as the existing... such as the existing parking lot, outdoor seating, barbecue area, gazebo, a proposed sunroom, and other indoor amenities. The future tenant will be supported with the services from PACE. So, uh, we already know that this is automatically permitted use in our R2 medium-density residential district. Our review assesses how the project meets the zoning ordinance. And we have a motion for you today. I also can summarize some feedback that we received from the fire marshal and the city engineer, but perhaps at this time we'd like to hear from the applicants. Chair?
Actually, before we start grilling you, I'd like to hear what the public safety feedback was first.
Sure. Uh, so the fire marshal, um, says hello. Sorry who couldn't make it. Um, but says that we need to, and so, um, the applicant will be required to meet all city code and that these, um, conversations can be addressed administratively. And with city code, they also are required to meet state code, which is what the fire marshal is citing. So we need to have a suppression system. Um, if the units are a hundred fifty feet away from fire department access, which I'm sure that our colleagues here, our partners here are familiar with. But either a fire suppression system needs to be installed if the apartments are farther away from fire department access. And fire department access must be twenty feet or wider, and it must be unobstructed. We can continue conversations with the fire marshal after this meeting, but the, we have our building official here who can chime in as well.
Did the fire marshal have any concern about the, the fact that they're so very close to each other? No? All right.
Hi, everyone, my name is Maya McCollum, I'm with MHT Housing. I'm super excited to be here today for this project and be able to present to you. So thank you so much for your time on this beautiful Thursday night. Um, so just to start off, I want to kind of explain who MHT Housing is. We have over thirty-three years of experience in the development, construction, property management industry, ranging from low-income housing tax credits to public supportive housing, to Section A and market rate. So we own and manage sixty-two properties across Michigan, all across Michigan and northern Indiana. We also have over five hundred employees, and we are a nonprofit, and we have a CDFI too. A little bit more about this project specifically, and, um, just looking at it into a little bit more depth, is it is twenty-one units, um, with two bedrooms in each of the units. It is double-wide containers with stick built in the middle. And it's for fifty-five and over senior housing. And then it's also, all the units will be ADA compliant. And I forgot, I, there have two bedrooms and two bathrooms in each of the units too. We want to really make an inclusive community out of this. And, um, also the front portion of that lot is already Oakwood Manor. That is already senior housing that we own and manage too, that's been there since two thousand and eleven. Uh, our team is made up of MHT Housing, developer, construction and management, all under one roof there. And then we also have Chemtech as our architect and PACE as our partner. I want to take a chance to invite PACE up here to kind of introduce their role in this and their partnership, and give them a chance to speak, if you wouldn't mind.
Fifty-five is considered senior.
Good evening, thank you for having us. We're also very excited about this project. My name is Mary Neber, and I'm the CEO for PACE Southeast Michigan.
My name is Amy Katz, I'm the Vice President of Strategic Growth for PACE Southeast Michigan.
And just to tell you a little bit about what we do, we are a non-for-profit healthcare company. We serve over nineteen hundred seniors throughout southeast Michigan. Um, we are funded by Medicare and Medicaid and primarily serve low-income seniors who are chronically ill, who are identified as nursing home eligible, but they want to remain in the community and independent. So everything we do provides them with that support and that care to keep them independent in the community. And one of the major challenges that we've had, that we've learned through the years, especially since COVID, is finding them affordable housing that they can afford to pay for, and then we provide the care that they need in their housing environments. And so what this exciting project allows us to do is to create a home for two people to live in, where they can remain independent, and yet it also makes it very effective for us to provide the care on the campus. I'm gonna add Amy in.
Yeah, so we would, um, have these twenty-one houses, have forty-two residents, who are members of our program, if you will, and we would provide all of the care on-site and the services that they would need, assistance with dressing, bathing, grooming, whatever the case may be that they would need in their own home, as we do now for the nineteen hundred people we serve, um, to be able to stay here and avoid being in a nursing home and proactive care, uh, to have, um, no hospitalizations. We have a local, I'm not sure if you know, but we do have a PACE program in the city of East Point at Tenon Grashit. So these people could go during the day to the day program, and that's where our primary care is, and rehab and so forth. So this is just housing to be in East Point in their local areas, um, to be able to live there, but also continue to attend the East Point Center. What can we answer?
Yeah, what questions do you have?
We love talking about it, so.
It's a great mission.
Well, I was, I was just curious how two complete strangers would want to live in the same house, but you've kind of answered that. Essentially, what you're, what I'm envisioning is a spread-out extended care facility with other services.
So oftentimes, people who are living in a very independent situation with a care, they, they lose their caregiver, or maybe they need additional care that they can't get in their home. We help people who are enrolled in our program, because everyone lives in the community in our program, not in nursing homes. Um, we, they often needs an alter, they need an alternative living situation that's affordable to them. Because as Mary said, most of them are low-income. So this provides them, they have their own bedroom, their own bathroom, common living, very common for our people in our program, that we have alternative housing, uh, options for them, and this would be one of our new options.
And you can see the pictures of the actual container homes, they're very beautiful. They're not what you would think of as a container. It, it, it's beautiful.
Yeah. And we can provide, we have home care services in all the, for all the participants that we take care of. So it becomes a very effective model for us to provide care to them in their homes as they need it, and prevents placement in assisted living or nursing home.
Well, this actually makes me really wish that Alden were here. Because if we had a EMS run or something like that, God forbid, you know, it would be nice if we had his presence here today to talk about that, if he feels comfortable with it. Because it sounds really good to me.
Interestingly enough, when it comes to EMS in this, in the county of McComb, we do have a contract directly for home EMS services through MedStar. They provide our services, so if, if, if someone calls, um, our services at, in the evening, we, we, our on-call, uh, company is MedStar. So we already have a very good relationship with that ambulance company who, who will go out and do some services in the home, like a home paramedic program, similar to that, for all of our participants. So it just so happens that we're standing in McComb, and that's our, our, um, a contract in McComb, yeah.
So if your resident needed assistance, they would contact your, your number?
And then it would just, yep, so they would contact our number, which goes directly to MedStar, because they're our on-call provider.
We, we,
Contract with them.
We educate all of our participants and their family members to call our main number, and then it's answered by MedStar and goes through a protocol, whether it's really nine-one-one, they dispatch. If it's not nine-one-one, which many of them have other issues going on, then they'll call our person on-call, and they'll either go visit them in the home and assess what's going on and call our person. Or sometimes they'll just make the appointment for them to be seen in the clinic the next day at the East Point Center. And we have nine, we have eight centers currently, almost nine throughout southeast Michigan. So typically, a center will serve about three to four hundred people out of that center. So at East Point, they actually serve up to two hundred and fifty out of that center, because it's a little bit smaller.
You had mentioned that your services include, I think you said, washing, shopping, dressing, home health care, so, um, these residents would be, if they were not under your service, would it be accurate to say that these people would need assisted living care or greater?
Yes, they, they all are, uh, as Mary mentioned, in order to be eligible for our program, one must be certified as nursing home eligible, which is actually done through an assessment upon their enrollment. And if they don't meet that, um, they wouldn't be able to be in our program. So they would all need, as you said, assisted, uh, living or nursing home, or like maybe even a person in their home helping them during the day. It could just be that they have cognitive impairment and they need oversight, or maybe some medical conditions or physical conditions that prevent them from taking care of themselves, if you will.
Most of the people in our program have anywhere from eight to a dozen chronic illnesses. They are, they are chronically ill, but they want to remain in the community, and they don't want to be in, in an institution. And that's, this is what we do, this is what we do every day. We've been in business for thirty years here in southeast Michigan, and the program itself is fifty, over fifty years old throughout the country. It's, it's funded by Medicare and Medicaid.
With the, um, so, you know, these people want to be independent, but they have many issues. Is there a difference between who gets put in Oakwood and who gets put in one of the container homes? How is that decided?
It's really based on their need. So let's say currently someone's in a nursing home right now, that is, because it's a, they broke their hip and they need rehab, and they're coming out and they really can't go home anymore. We would, we, as their all-inclusive care provider, would help find an alternative housing for them so they wouldn't have to stay permanent in the nursing home. This would be a perfect, perfect place for them to go. Or let's say somebody is a PACE participant and their caregiver passes away, and they really can't live a home, home alone. Our social workers, because we have a full interdisciplinary team of clinicians and et cetera, their social worker who's assigned to them would help and nurse, would help find an alternative house for them with a care, we provide care on-site, this could also be something. So there's so many reasons that we help people find housing, and this is a place that we could use as housing, which was, we need desperately. That's affordable.
The way our model works is that we are the health plan and we're the comprehensive care provider. So we're fully at risk for all the cost of care that goes on. They go to the hospital, we pay the bill. They go to a nursing home, we pay the bill. They see a specialist, we pay the bill. So everything we do is to wrap our arms around that person, care for what that person needs, and prevent declining condition. And so it's a very different model than what typical healthcare operates from.
Yeah, it's, you're enlightening me, um, I, I, so I'm asking that, experts, if I have a question, it sounds a little off, it's because I don't know.
It's okay, it's okay, most people don't know about PACE.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with it, but not, you're really telling me a lot about it, so that's great. So like, when I think about these people that are, you know, needing pretty serious, uh, health assistance, and then I think they're in a container, uh, home, seems to me that they should be in Oakwood in, in the aspect of, you know, I'm assuming, and I don't, maybe I don't, this is again, I don't know, but in Oakwood, do you have a personnel on staff that's in Oakwood?
And we would have the same, they, they have, um, at Oakwood, they don't have care providers.
They don't?
Oakwood is independent housing, actually. It's senior independent housing, so we only have onsite staff or manager and maintenance. So that manager and maintenance will still oversee the containers themselves, but PACE will be providing the services to the containers. They're kind of two separate things. Um, PACE is bringing in their participants for the containers, and while we're, um, open for all public for Oakwood Manor. There's also some public supportive housing in that too. So we have to stay true to that tenant selection plan for Oakwood Manor. Um, that's why we're pulling in Oakwood cottages. A lot of Oakwood being thrown around separately for that tenant selection plan to cater to PACE's, um, partnership and wants for that.
If we have somebody that lives at Oakwood Manor, current Oakwood Manor, um, we do, actually, and we provide the care there. So we have staff that go in, help them get dressed and bathed, uh, in the morning, maybe ready for the day center. We may provide some meals for them as well. So anything they need to maintain their independence at Oakwood. But this really would have onsite care staff from us, twenty-four-seven.
So if I wrap my head around this, your company is like the operations manager.
I'm builder.
Your company is like the,
Care provider.
We're the care provider, and they are the houser.
Your facilities, your in-house care.
Right, and what I want to add to that is oftentimes when you think of people with chronic illness, we think of them as very debilitated in a bed, and that is a fallacy. So people live with chronic illness as they age, and the way we provide the care is wrapping our arms around them. Many of them are, you know, the social determinants, like a home, is going to help with their well-being. So these are the things that we attend to, along with the medical care that they get from us. It's more than just medical care, we make sure they have food, we make sure they have, um, psychosocial services, we make sure they have spiritual care. All of that is part of the model, and there's nothing out of pocket for them because the funding comes from Medicaid and Medicare.
So they don't pay rent?
They do pay rent.
Through the social security.
They do pay rent, yes.
Although is that subsidized as well? It is, right?
So there, yeah.
Yeah, through the housing setup, yep, yep. The other thing we also offer is transportation. So we have full-service buses that pick up participants from their home and bring them to the center every day, and bring them back to their home, and then our home care team will meet them at home, get them tucked in at night.
Sounds to be a great service.
It's great, spread the word.
Um, I, MHT, MHT, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard you say that MHT owns Oakwood as well, is that true?
Yes, we are the owner and original developer on that project too, so we've had it for its whole lifetime. Um, honestly, if you look at it now, I wish I had some, my slideshow up to show, but it's, the property is in great shape for how old it is, um, and yeah, it's, it's a thriving community.
And they're gonna add on the back for some community, or community room, an area for us to use also for the residents that are in the containers to also use.
Well, I was wondering about, like, if you didn't own it, you know, your, your parking lot is into another company's parking lot. You owned it also, now I understand that, that makes sense.
That's the building there.
And they've been, MHT's been a great partner with us, many of our people do reside in their other housing facilities. Independent living is very common in our model.
As far as the parking then, when, when we look, can you, let's see the, the, the site plan, trying to form it. So like, where all the yellow containers are at, there's no parking, is that true?
That's true.
That's accurate, right?
Yep. The parking is the gray.
Okay, and then, so, is it your, you kind of built the model of what, of the, uh, average person that live in there might be? What, some of them will be rather homebound, but some may be able to walk to
Correct.
The sunroom, or?
Sure.
The sunroom, is it?
Many of them are ambulatory, they can walk on their own.
Okay.
Some of them need help, some of them have walkers, you know, wheelchairs, the, the, it's a variety.
Out of nineteen hundred people, uh, that are currently in our program, we have about, uh, eight that drive. So there's a very low, there's not a need for, um, parking for them.
Something else that struck me on this is that, right, you've got a container that houses two people. And they have their own living with the, the common area, and I understand that. But that implies that everybody there is a single person?
Not necessarily. They may have a spouse in the community that can't live with them, can't take care of them, is old, old, too old, or maybe has their own back issues, there's a lot of people. It's really interesting about the, um, inability, um, or the, the care help that's needed for married couples and other family members that just can't do it.
So even if you had a married couple that both needed your assistance?
They could live together in a container.
We have married couples now, yeah.
A lot of married couples that live, this would be perfect.
They might have separate bedrooms.
How perfect would this be?
We do have married couples in the program.
One is gonna house one person.
That's correct, there is not room for two people in each bedroom. There is room for a,
One and one.
Yeah.
I had a quick question. Uh, first of all, I want to commend you for the services you offer.
Thank you.
That will be us one day.
Yes.
It'll be all of us someday.
Um, just in the site plan, um, I see the road to the right, uh, where it says in case there's a need for, you know, emergency vehicles. Um, but the entrance, do you have to go all the way around the complex to get to those individuals? That's to the other side? And, you know, if they're going all the way around to reach those people, maybe at the park?
There's one, do you see the draw?
Is it, yeah. Is it, yeah.
There's a...
There another entrance way on that left side?
And there's one in the middle?
Oh, the right side, I should say.
Not for emergency vehicles.
So, coming from the street off of, um, Nels Avenue? So, the way to get to the rear is only down, is there a way to come on the other direction if you were to go right?
There is an entry and exit way on the walking path for emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
The first one is where my mouse is now, uh, the, yeah, western side. And then the other entry-exit point would be over here at the corner of the, uh, parking lot.
Correct, so does that mean you have to circle the entire building to get over where your cursor is now?
Yeah, I circle around the rear of the property, yeah.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I just, you know, when every second can matter, it's like going all the way around the building is, there's not another entrance to go to those at the very end, um, just as curious in the site plan design.
Is, is that particular drive, um, used by anybody else other than me and us? Or is it, it's pretty, it's pretty narrow, and then getting back to the whole issue about timeliness, I mean, is that wide enough to accommodate two cars?
It says for emergency vehicles, that's twelve feet.
Is that, it's for emergency only, is that...
That, that's what I understand, yes. That's for emergency vehicle, right? Yep.
It looks like it said twelve feet though.
Yeah, that's, that's right, that walk, basically it's for, uh, golf carts to, to drop off people and pick people up. But it's also wide enough for a emergency vehicle to use, but that's strictly a walkway, and it's really, uh, for the residents to, to use. We, we were, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure that the fire department has access to every unit, or, or, or ambulance, but that will not be a road. It's a walkway that's, would be, let's say, a, a, a blacktop that will be strong enough to carry an emergency vehicle only in an emergency. The rest of it, but then also the, so, my understanding that staff would also be accessing it using go-karts, I mean, uh, car, golf carts and things like that.
Are there signs in both ends that say this is an emergency?
There will be, yeah, yeah, but that's, you know...
And what if somebody needs to pick up their mom and, 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 you know, their mom's housebound? How does she get out without having a public car go there?
Well, we actually, uh, the, the, your engineering staff, uh, E W, suggested that we add two more walkways so that each circle would have a walkway. One there and then one to, onto the, to the, to the right. So, so, that way they wouldn't have that far to walk.
If you can get closer to the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, the, um, we are following the suggestion that we just got, uh, yesterday from the planning department, uh, to add two more walkways so that each, um, each, each circle, uh, a, a community circle will have a pathway going directly to it from the parking lot. And we can do drop-offs at those points. Uh, you know, give a five-foot sidewalk, maybe twenty feet wide, so that'll allow for somebody to make a drop-off to somebody, but a handicap ramp at that point too. So, so they go from the parking lot, curb up, uh, ramp up the curb, and then a wa-, then a, then a straight walk through to, to the, uh, units.
So, um, this, this, uh, site plan is still in flux a little bit then, right? Because you were saying there's a suggestion...
It's in the packet, the rip markings?
What's in the, the updated one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've just received the notes, uh, the, uh, the comments from the engineering department, and we will, there's nothing in there that we, we found objectable, objectionable, and therefore we will comply with what they have asked for.
Chair?
Please.
Planning Commission and applicant received this review a week ago. This is the planning department's review. Uh, the engineer review was sent yesterday, I believe, to the applicant. Um, and the engineer's review doesn't have any new information that the planning review does not have, or they don't have any items that can't be, uh, reviewed administratively. But this walkway, this path, this is from the planning report that was sent to the applicant and to the planning commission, uh, a week ago.
Why was this only sent to the applicant yesterday?
This was not sent to the applicant yesterday, this is sent to the applicant a week ago.
Okay.
Well, we, we submitted the drawings a lot earlier, so we didn't want, we didn't have a chance to revise. We, you've already received the drawings, so that we don't have a chance to, to make these small, uh, additions to the drawings.
Chair?
Please.
Um, that's totally fine. These are items that can be addressed administratively, no problem. You did not need to rush with the revised set. Everything is going swimmingly.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify on those walkways you were talking about, and the one that's in the center right now? Those are walkways, do golf carts go on them, right?
Yes, yes.
All right.
So, it's just like a sidewalk, it's just like with the dark gray is the parking lot, someone can pull up, walk to their parent or whoever's, uh, place, grab them, and just like a sidewalk, it's not a very long sidewalk either. Our buses will have to do the same.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. I, I have a question also, just like, these are container houses?
Mm-hmm.
What was the thought process there?
Do you want to, it's, any of us can answer, but you probably should, because it's affordable.
Um, so for the affordability aspect, you know, this has kind of been a dream project made up, and, um, with construction costs obviously always rising and affordable housing in great need, this became a, uh, resolution or, um, a solution for that aspect of it. Uh, we ended up making a mock model, if you will, behind our office, and we found it that it was a great solution for this crisis that we're having for affordability.
Is this the first...
Sustainability, yeah.
First container house project you're working on?
This is the first project, um, actually, the first of its type in Michigan, if I'm correct. Correct, yeah.
And I would add, it's the first time that PACE will be partnering with housing in this way to provide affordable housing for the people who need it and allow them to be independent and not in an institution. This is a huge, um, advantage for them and their life.
Uh, I appreciate the fact that it's kind of hidden out, and the, the pictures look lovely. So, when I first heard about it, I kept having flashbacks to, uh, something that was shared with us the last time we talked about container homes. And the person said, "Well, you've got to look at this home," and I think it was Benton Harbor. So, we were up here doing battle with the public, and we were looking at this image of a container house, and it was repellent to me. It looked like somebody just cut a doorway in it, slapped a couple of sconces with flowers on it, and I think if I looked close enough, it probably said China Shipping Company on the other side. It was really bad. So, when, when this conversation came up, I was a little, eh, but then I got the images, and I thought, "Well, these are beautiful." Um, so, my concern is, and, and admittedly, nobody will see this unless they're going back there or a resident. How is it going to look aesthetically to the people that are living? Is it going to look like a brown metal box?
No.
No. No, truthfully, like, it looks like a home. You see these beautiful renderings done. We also want to incorporate other materials such as stained wood to really complement, um, the metals and to make it not just look like a box was thrown up. Like, these are going to be well-thought-out homes. If you come tour at our office, you can see the inside is even well-thought-out too, to not look like, oh, you just have, there's metal siding. No, this is, there's an accent wall and a beautiful kitchen, like, these are very homey and, um, yeah, well-thought-out there.
Can I just add that many of the people that would be living in this kind of home will think it's the Taj Mahal because of what they've been accustomed to. They will have their own private bath that's handicap accessible, and their own private bedroom. That is not what many of them are used to living in. Some of them live in group homes, some of them live in, um, studio apartments. So, this is a beautiful answer, and they can afford to pay the rent for it. That's, it's just a beautiful model because it's a container home. You know, if it were bricks and mortars, it'd be a whole nother story.
I, I would like to point out, as, from the architectural aspect of this, the interior is going to be drywall. I mean, we, and also the buildings are going to meet the Michigan Energy Code. The walls are going to have, uh, the, the steel is on the outside, which we're going to paint, obviously, and then there's going to be a layer of rigid ins- one-inch rigid insulation to be contiguous, which is requirement for Michigan, Michigan Energy Code. Then you're going to have wood framing, and then inside the wood framing is going to be additional insulation, and then you're going to have drywall. And then also we have, uh, the ceiling is going to be a drywall ceiling. We're actually drop, we're now actually using the top, the, the, the underside of the steel metal. We've act, because, there, there is a, there's a reason for that because we're going to put a two, uh, we're going to put, um, wood framing across that, and then that way our light fixtures can fit under the metal, uh, decking. And then above that is going to be wood, uh, trusses, uh, which also have insulation in them. And then the center portion, what we did was, it's obvious that, uh, it's difficult to run plumbing inside a, a, a metal box. So, what we did was we have the front metal, uh, front, uh, container is going to be the living room and eating space, and then, then the back container is going to be the bedrooms. But in the center, where the bathrooms are, is actually going to be a wood-framed structure. And then, um, and then which will also allow for plumbing to be built under the flooring.
You're, you're answering my next question. Can you pull up slide A1, please? That, and then you can, maybe you can speak to how these containers are, because this, this is going to be the blueprint they're kind of aligning.
Okay. Yeah, the, the container is the size of the bedroom and also the size of the living room. And then in between, we have a wood structure for the bathroom so that we can run the plumbing underneath it. And then the, the wall above the living room, you, you see the living room wall? Above that would be glass looking into the bathrooms. If you look on the exterior, so, no, the windows...
Elevated.
Right there, right there, right there would be windows looking into the bathrooms from the out, from the, uh, from the roof. Not skylights, but, uh...
Close enough.
Clarestory windows. So, it'll light up those bathrooms. Bathrooms won't look dingy, dingy at all, they're going to be a nice-looking space.
So, ju- just to reiterate what I think, I heard you say bedroom one and bedroom two is one container?
That's right.
And kitchen and living room are one container, and in between that you have a...
Yes.
Gotcha. Really nice.
Chair?
Yes.
I just also want to clarify, while we're on the elevations sheet, that wood is the primary facade material or the proposed primary facade material, and vinyl. So, just wanted to clarify that it's not metal. Metal is an accessory material that's proposed.
Um, I'm, can I, I, there was a typo on the drawings where it says wood siding stained at the bottom. That's actually metal, it is going to be metal.
Also, the primary material is metal.
It's going to be metal. You have, the mo-, so the, the, the exterior of the, of the, of the living room, kitchen area is going to be metal, and the sides are going to be metal, and the outside of the bedrooms are going to be metal. And then in between that, we're going to, but it's, and in between is going to be the wood siding.
Chair? So, planning commission has to decide if you want to allow for metal as a primary facade material. Currently, metal is not allowed in the R2 medium residential, residential zoning district, but planning commission has the opportunity or right to allow for, modify these material regi-, uh, requirements if they see that the material and design meets the aesthetic of the existing neighborhood. So, the applicant proposes to use, um, stained wood, vinyl, and metal?
Yes.
And planning commission needs to authorize the use of these materials for this project.
Chair?
Being that it, they are container homes, I think metal for this project to operate at the facade or something else, you kind of cut into your point of having a container for the cost savings. You got to facade them again.
And they'll be painted.
Promise it's going to look nice.
You can come see it at our office.
Yeah, we have a prototype.
You know, a- again, I, I, I said this earlier, I, I understand that nobody's going to see this, but, you know, the people that are living there deserve to have something that looks really nice. Whether it's subsidized or not is irrelevant. They deserve to have something nice aesthetically that they can walk through their community, so...
I, I can assure you that the MHT buildings are all beautiful. They are done really with very high-quality expectations and standards. They, we have staff that would like to live there.
Yeah, three more years I could apply.
Yeah.
Um, I can apply now.
Me too.
Uh, I just, as I was considering, uh, the facade in container homes, um, there's something called Three Square that really shows Trumble Avenue Detroit. You can really see what that looks like with the painting. Um, it doesn't look anything like a container home, but... I'm looking at the color selection, they have the green, the blue, and those are rich colors that really changes that, you don't know you're looking at. And just for, like I say, you need to see a sample, uh, Three Square on the website, or either you go to Trumble, you have a whole community in a block, you would never know. And so, it has, it has changed from what we were initially presenting.
I mean, this is your world, right? You see this type of stuff?
Yeah, this is the growing world because housing is an issue, so, that might be something, um... The consultants we might have to consider is really talking about affordable housing, um, is, is across the nation. The container home is becoming a viable unit so that there is some cost savings. But, um, we might have to revisit. I think this project, this pilot program here is amazing. Um, seniors deserve to be able to live. Um, often what happens is when you reach a certain age, most times when you're most vulnerable, if you've been in affordable housing, that twenty, fifteen, twenty years is up, and you can be just ousted because now they can go to market rent. So, I commend you for what you're doing for that population when they're most vulnerable, and their housing is just taken away from them, even if they're rent homeowners, I've seen that happen.
We also think we can do something to think about.
Amara? I would just ask you, I, I'm interested in your opinion on, um, you know, all metal. Interested in your opinion on that.
Um, I think that it can... Chair? I think that any material can be used in, uh, like, any material, vinyl, metal, wood, um... Name another material for me.
Breck.
Breck, thank you. Anything can be used well, and anything can be used poorly. So, it depends on the aesthetic of the design, and the per, what we are seeing today is a well-thought-out aesthetically pleasing development project. So, I don't see any worries about metal. My question would be, was, was wood ever, um, like, proposed? And what made the change, or was that just immediately, like, a miscommunication?
Well, actually, part of the building is wood, and the person, and our designer, our draw, uh, I've actually just transposed the wording. But if you look on the side of the buildings, there is, and on top of the buildings, that is wood.
Right.
Okay.
Right there and right on the side and right over there is, that is wood. Wherever there's wood framing, wherever wood framing structure, which is in the center, that's also, uh, going to be a wood, we're not using, we're not going to put steel paneling up, we're keeping the wood there. We wanted to keep, uh, more of a distinctive, uh, we wanted to have a balance of the two materials. We didn't want one material for the whole building.
It softens...
Yeah, we didn't want to have one giant green building or blue building, right? Because we're using a multiple of colors. We wanted to break it up with some natural wood.
Yeah, there's, Chair, there's multiple colors, multiple textures. The colors and textures soften the metal container element of the design, so you can tell that it's, I mean, you can't really even tell that it's a shipping container.
No, you can't.
Especially with the windows.
You can't tell that it's a shipping container from the inside either, and the model that they have that we've been to is just one shipping container, and it's still lovely. So, this being two plus the center, um, and the, the, the fabrics and the materials that they use, the wood flooring and the, you know, the kitchen and everything is, it's, it's, you, you cannot believe that you're in a container home when you're inside of it either. So, it's incredible.
Also, uh, as Ms. Nayla, Nayla was saying, uh, containers are going to have to be used, I mean, it's a sustainable thing. Uh, we're buying so many products from China, which they ship over containers, and we got noth-, we have nothing to ship back. So, these, so we have mountains of these, of these containers sitting around.
Oh, yeah, I have those too.
It's of the interior of our existing model. Okay. I have a picture right here, if any of you, of the inside of our existing model at our office. So, if you can't make it out to Bingham Farms, you're all welcome, I'm there every day next week, or every day. week, or every day, actually. And, uh, if you wanna come by, even if it's in the evening, you drop a call, you wanna come by, check it out after hours, I'll stick around, open it up if anybody has any questions. But this is, you know, the interior of our model. I was part of the crew that got to go down to Austin, Texas, and I toured three different facilities that are currently building and shipping all over the world, container homes. So it's something that's been passionate to me. I love the whole, you know, affordability. I'm the assistant controller of the MHT construction and we're looking for ways to save costs, but we primarily focus with that affordable housing in our mind every day. And with these rising costs, it's hard to keep up with this. So being able to provide things like these shipping containers, over the last year, I've been actually touring and looking at the 3D printed houses even. Anywhere there can be a cost savings is something I'm looking at.
Can you send that image to Ms. Brozchevsky's email and then she can flash it on the screen?
Uh, absolutely.
Chair Smith. B Smith.
B Smith.
I'll send, I have a collection of the pictures.
You got the collection?
Chair.
Yes.
I can address again, Commissioner Broll, I hear you and your concerns regarding a metal, um, residential dwelling unit, but as I stated before, you would be able to spot if the design didn't fit the aesthetic. You would, it would stick out. Um, here, you can see that this is aesthetically pleasing. Uh, another architect might produce something different and that's why planning commission needs to have discretion between, uh, materials and allowing for vinyl and wood and metal. Uh, but you can see this, uh, is somewhat objective.
And the, the roof is gonna be shingles. It's gonna be a shingled roof.
Right. Thank you for your feedback. Mr. Myers.
Mr. Chair, there's a couple thoughts I have and, and bear with me for just a minute. Thirty-seven years ago, we all questioned why we'd put plastic on our houses. It's called vinyl and we now think it's wonderful for many, many of our houses when in a city like Detroit, we only built with stone and brick. And now we've, we figured out that that would be an economic, structural, sound, waterproofing, protected way to do this. We're in a new generation and we need to even continue to reduce our operating costs for housing that's affordable. I think when you understand that the modern day paint system or as well as, um, powder coating will hold up to the fifteen to thirty years that any vinyl or wood siding will hold up without cracking, you've got a very sound, sound, structural, safe structure. As I looked at their paperwork and their drawings, um, they exceed our state regulations for energy efficiency. They've included all the drywall structural systems from a housing standard. And I think you're going to not want to hide this community once we put it together. This is gonna be one of the first in the state and you'll want to let this be a recognition of where the next housing affordability statement will be for the elderly coming into our country and into our cities. And you don't wanna hide this neighborhood, you'll wanna show it off because it will be the first of its kind.
You know, a lot of firsts in Eastwood. Nobody realized.
We do.
We do.
Any other?
I have no more comments other than, again, congratulations and I think it's a great project and I love the innovation.
Thank you.
I would just add, um, it's nine hundred and twenty square feet for two people. That, I think, in this type of situation, it's a lot for two people. That's good for them, you know?
And they need it. They, they need it for walkers and extra aides that might be supporting them in that same space.
We've had, you know, plans before, before where, you know, you can see like three hundred eighty square feet for a single person. They can also, this is, that's.
And, and Chair, may I add to that? They modified that based on our city standards for what is a single or two-person livable space.
Yes.
And they met that adequately and exceeded it.
I have no more questions. This is, it looks really nice.
Thank you.
A lot of thought and good, good effort.
Good progress.
Very nice.
Chair.
Please.
Um, while our guests are at the podium and planning commission's still deliberating, there's additional waivers, um, to discuss. So we do have a proposed motion on page three of your review, motion to approve the site plan for multifamily dwelling at 14825 Nels Avenue, East Point Parcel Number thirteen three six two two seven zero three four, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review letter, the required conditions, items in the, outlined in the engineer's letter, the required items from the fire marshal, and based on the fact that the site is in general compliance with the ordinance. Listed on the first page of the site plan review, the planner's review, is the information needed for site plan conditional approval. And then below are some topics to discuss for waivers. Um, so one, we discussed the metal, um, allowing for metal and vinyl and wood as facade materials. Two would be discussing the waiver of the twenty percent vehicle requirement to provide twenty percent of, um, the parking space as electric vehicle charging stations and, sorry, EV capable spaces. So removing this requirement because the applicant does not propose to add any new off-street parking spaces. We already learned that the applicant is, um, providing alternative modes of transportation such as a shuttle that guests can, um, hire to go to their doctor's appointments or visit family members. So they are requesting a waiver from having to produce the EV capable spaces. And then we also have to waive or require deciduous trees that I can talk about further. And then there's some items that are needed for conditional site plan approval from the applicant that the applicant's already familiar with, but some of these items are, um, addressing the rear yard setback. Right now, we're off by probably like ten feet or so, but we can talk about that further to meet zoning ordinance requirements. And, um, there's some items needed for pedestrian access that we talked about and creating those accessible paths, items for exterior lighting, and some items like, such as providing another barrier-free parking space to meet ordinance requirements. These are all listed and can be handled administratively. Let me know how you'd like to continue the conversation, such as discussing the EV capable charging station waiver and also the landscape waiver.
Personally, I have no problem with waiving either situation.
Specifically, the EV says this is not a driving violation. And they have the parking lot for, that already exists.
So I'm, I'm content with it, Mr. Broll. The EV capable spaces, I don't see a problem with waiving that.
There was one question you raised, if I may ask, Amara, you said something about the setbacks, that's something they could adjust administratively on the rear?
Yes.
We have a twenty foot, you need that extra ten foot, you can address that.
So the proposed setback is like twelve feet, right? That's what the review says. And per ordinance, setback needs to be twenty feet.
Oh, okay, I see you have it in twenty feet, okay.
However, the city, uh, engineer also stated that, no. Um, a setback of twenty-five feet is needed from the property line for underground storage facilities.
I, I, I'm not the in, the site engineer, but I don't believe we have, uh, underground storage facilities, I mean, like detention. So we're not actually, actually, we, we don't need one. Um, so we, we really aren't going to need that space for that, uh, setback because we don't have underground storage.
Why would a housing developer need underground storage facilities? They're putting up a gas station.
No, it's for, uh, retention.
Right.
Water retention.
Right.
But the, the parking lot's existing and, and the area that we're working on, I mean, and if there, if there is a requirement by the engineering department for retention, underground reta- we, we can, you don't need to go underground, you can go, but a lot of times we are because it saves space. And we have, uh, so if we need to put one in, we, there's plenty of room on the, on the site to build a retention, uh, pond, uh, if it's needed, but I don't think it even, it needed because we're not adding a new parking lot.
Chair, so these items can be addressed administratively. The only thing that I would point out, I'm sorry, Commissioner, were you still?
No, no, I just said okay.
Um, the only thing I would point out is on page fourteen and fifteen, we discussed the landscaping section of the site plan. And yes, the applicant is, um, providing, well, providing thirty-six trees, but the requirement is forty-two. So we do wanna see an additional six deciduous or evergreen trees. And then additionally upon that, we do need, um, an additional thirty-six trees. So some of these can be waived, um, some of them can be payment in lieu, some of them can be pay, or, um, green infrastructure in lieu of planting, but we do rec, we do wanna see, and the six deciduous trees that are required as part of, um, the minimum planting for a dwelling unit. And we also would like to see more of these trees to line the pedestrian pathway. And as my colleague has on the screen, is this the landscaping plan? Thank you. Wanting to insert a word? Perfect. So you can see the linear parts of the, the sidewalk, um, the, the walkway, especially, um, to the outer edge where the walkway is, that it could stand to have more tree coverage, which would also mitigate any urban heat island effect.
I, I don't, we have no problem with that, complying. Right?
Right.
Just to be clear though, is the applicant then not seeking waiver for the two-tree, uh, requirement for dwelling? Is that? Not sure we're around with that.
So the applicant, it needs to plant, sorry, Chair. Okay. Uh, So we'll need thirty-eight trees to satisfy all ordinance requirements. The applicant can plant them, they can af, ask for a waiver for some of them, we don't recommend all of them.
Do you have any issues planting thirty-eight trees?
Thirty-eight trees will probably not work sufficiently for the site. The six trees would be doable, so we'd be looking for, uh,
Why don't you get up to the podium, please?
But we, yeah.
Chair. Um, thank you for attending this meeting tonight. It's really important to speak in the microphone so we're inclusive for folks listening at home. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All two of them.
So for the, the thirty-eight trees will not be feasible for this lot. It would probably look too many there. So, um, the six trees would have been doable.
And then I, I understand that you, you have an, you have a program where we can buy trees and use them somewhere else in the city?
No program.
Yeah, we could, we could go ahead and buy the, the forty, the thirty-eight trees and, and then you can do, plant them where you want in the city. Is that what we're saying?
Does that satisfy the city's need?
Well, Chair, we would like to see the, the pathways aligned with trees. Do you see how they're barren?
Are you talking about, oh, along there? Okay, well, that, we didn't really look at that as part of our project, but we, we have, you have no problem adding trees along there?
Yeah. Chair, it's the walkway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then we'll add the trees, but we won't necessarily put them in our space, we'll put them on the site. Okay?
Chair.
Please.
Also, I just wanna make sure the applicant's aware, we already received this, we can, uh, address this administratively, but we do need to see a parking lot screening device, which can include a vegetative buffer, um, or a screening wall, three-foot screening wall. It could be concrete masonry unit decorative three-foot screening wall.
Are you talking about in the front of the building?
To screen the public right-of-way and the parking lot. So access screening device from the parking lot for pedestrians walking by.
Okay.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, either shrubs or a small.
Yeah.
For thirty-one.
Right.
It's the block headlights.
Ms. Brozchevsky? Are we at, we're, we're asking them to adjust the original project?
No, um, sorry, give me a second, Chair. Commissioner Broll, do you know where it's at on the site plan?
You got two out of them today, you can come up.
Come on, Commissioner Broll.
No slacking on your last night.
Thank you. Sorry about that, thank you, one second.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we are, um, the city has been moving in the direction of, um, many, um, rain gardens and other sustainability greening options, so perhaps that could be something that could be incorporated into the site near the parking lot, so the runoff would be, um, you know, captured and, um, not go into the sewer, um, or the combined sewer, so that might be an option in exchange for some of the trees.
Okay.
Chair, on the screen, we have where the applicant must provide parking lot screen.
Okay, that makes more sense. But all these, uh, can be handled administratively, correct?
Yes, Chair. And my colleague just, um, reiterated that we do need to see screening along Nels. So I missed, I missed.
Along where?
But all of these, all of these items can be addressed administratively.
Okay. The screening just started, you're talking like a two-foot screen, green screening or perhaps a wall, something like that?
Exactly. The applicant has the choice of either a three-foot masonry or concrete masonry unit decorative screening wall or, um, a continuous hedge.
It, it's the block, the headlights on the cars parking.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we ready to clean this up and make a motion?
Please.
City attorney, should I reread the motion?
I had a case of, of, it's been said since the motion was initially made.
All right, Chair.
Go ahead.
Unless Commissioner Broll, you wanna give it a go?
No, no.
This is your swan song.
This is your final.
Your swan song.
All right, guys.
Go ahead, Amara.
We're getting you TV time here.
Get a drink of water if you need it.
Motion to approve the site plan for multifamily dwelling at 14825 Nels Avenue, East Point Parcel ID Number thirteen thirty-six two two seven zero three four, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city attorney to address the comments during the planning commission meeting and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review letter dated August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and the required conditions listed in the engineer's review letter and the required item, items from the fire marshal, and based on the fact that the site plan is in general compliance with the ordinance. Listed on the first page of the site plan review from the planner is the information needed for site plan conditional approval. All these items can be addressed administratively. Listed below are the waivers from the planning commission. The planning commission grants the following waivers. Um, the planning commission allows for the applicant to use wood, vinyl, and metal as primary facade materials. The app, the planning commission waives the EV capable space requirement and the planning commission will allow the applicant to meet some of their landscaping requirements via green infrastructure.
There, there is one waiver that we haven't discussed and that is the irrigation system. We would like to not use it because we plan on using indigenous plants that don't require irrigation.
How is the site currently, uh, watered? Because there is some landscaping outside right now.
I believe there's front, on the front portion, there's.
Can you, microphone, please?
Can you mic them, please?
Yeah. Oakwood currently on the front portion does have irrigation.
Chair, can we discuss how the deciduous trees and evergreen shrubs would be watered?
Uh, we we plan on using uh indigenous uh shrubs and trees, which don't need to be irrigated. We've always had what irrigation syst- I'm I'm, by the way, I'm a lead A- AP, ar- architect, we're uh leading environmental engineering. And w- w- our goals now are to eliminate uh irrigation because of the waste of water. And in order to do that, you need to use indigenous plants. And that's what we plan on using here is indigenous plants, so that they don't need to be watered. Just like most houses don't have to have watering on their plants, uh we 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 want to do the same thing. It's a, it's a, it's a sustainable, sustainability issue for us as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Back as well as cost.
Chair, I'd listen to the lead AP environmental. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Albright, I think you had something?
I did, Mara, in the course of reading the motion, um, you mentioned the city attorney, I think you meant uh the revised site plan should go to the city planner.
You don't want to see it?
I'm happy to be CC'd on it.
Okay, I um corrected that motion to say city planner receives the uh revised site plan. Thank you. And Chair, just to calm any hesitancy about removing the irrigation system, um if any plants, trees die that were proposed on the site plan, the applicant must provide a new tree and plant.
Yeah, be- besides the fact, um, besides the fact that they're warranted for at least a year.
Exactly.
Any more to read? Is anybody willing to make that mouthful of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support, Ms. Holman.
Commissioner Broll?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Chair DeHunt?
I will happily vote yes. Now you get city council.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Alright, Ms. Brosziewski, can you get a drink of water? Mister Myers is on deck for D, E, and F.
D, E, and F.
Well, I know you're on for E and F, do you want to pass off D to one of the girls?
Yes.
Okay.
We can pass that off to uh Brigitte when she returns. Your report.
Eight-thirty was in the back of my mind, by the way, but I think we're well past that.
In front of you, you have the items um quarterly report, we're on training, right?
Oh, we're on item D under new business.
Oh, looks like I haven't dated.
Never mind. Chair, the discussion on master plan rewrite housing in neighborhoods was actually proposed by the city uh manager's office.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we move on to item E, and then we'll circle back to D.
Item E, discussion on vacant buildings.
Mister Myers?
Chair, and and planning commission, this will be really short because of the length of of the night, but we are in the process of of moving towards a five-year master plan, which was in the alphabet prior to us. The city management is beginning to make that paperwork uh and put that to to an RFP, I believe. Part of what we've done in the very recent two or three weeks has has created a team of developments between the EDC, DDA, planning, and myself, and some of the count, the the part of them have been involved with the city management. And we have targeted a a high-risk problem that we're having in certain sections of the city, and that is vacant commercial businesses and vacant commercial lots. And we've been working from my department to try to figure out and clean up what um has been misused property without licenses or proper construction of that property. And so we're proposing in the next couple of, in by the next month or so, is to submit to you some suggestions on some amendments of what our plant, our our ordinance state already about vacant registrations, how they can be rewarded, how they can be redesigned, and how they can be re-feed. Because right now, we have them stretched out over a registration for one registration for over two years. And that means we don't have a chance uh from my office to get back into that building or into that property officially until the, after they get registered for a two-year cycle. And as we're getting ready for developing and planning of our master plan for the next five years, what we want to do is do the cleanup of our business district's vacant registrations, whether they be lots that are being used illegally or emptied, or commercial businesses that have been left vacant but are being also used illegally by using them for things that they're not meant to be done. And we believe that if we can stimulate um the owners of these properties to use them or protect them to what they're u- used to be, what they're intended to be used for based on what zone they're in, we can have a better, healthy plan going forward in our master plan. And so we'd like to review those with you, so that we can make a recommendation onto council.
So to put some teeth into the building department?
Very much so.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, or?
It's a good idea.
We have a lot of empty buildings along Nine Mile that are not for sale. They're just empty buildings that nobody's doing anything with. Yeah, it it it's a horrific waste of.
And Chair, they are, they are doing some things, we can confirm about four of them right now, they are doing something with them, they're using for personal storage, which that district doesn't permit you to use as a storage facility. And so at this point, we have a hard time getting in to verify and confirm the amount of storage, so that the building department can easily uh write a violation of illegal use of property. We can do that, and we have begun to do that with the help of the city attorney and our zoning structure now, for uh vacant property or parking lots that should be used or should be licensed for what they're being used for, and we're now taking and targeting those. But we have some businesses, we have to do the same. So we've actually set up a map between the three departments, planning, myself, and EDC, DDA, and we're targeting over the next four months to cover almost three-quarters of the city's business districts in finding out how and what is registered, what isn't registered, and what we can do to comply with them to our standard until they sell or make operable.
Anybody have any questions for Mister Meyer?
No, great strategy.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Holman's back, so let's double back to item D. Miss Smith? This was added at uh city administration's request, I believe?
Yes, discussion on master plan rewrite housing and neighborhoods.
Sorry about that, I thought it was a motion. Um, yes, so um the city received a grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the master plan rewrite, which was approved by planning, or recommended by planning commission to go to city council and was approved. And then we have another thirty thousand dollars that was awarded um for an economic development strategy moving forward.
Closer.
Sorry, there I am. Um, so one of the things that we need to focus on, obviously, is the housing, housing needs, um, a- any kind of infill, any kind of um, um, what do you guys call it? Well, not revitalization, no, the um, density. Density. Um, so this, these are some of the things that we really want to focus on moving forward. Um, again, that goes towards the rental requirements, it goes towards some of the others. Um, it goes toward, you know, things to be thought of are also the uh, we do not currently require a certificate of occupancy or a point-of-sale requirement. Um, and we have a number, many, many people who come in and have bought a house for thirty thousand dollars not knowing what that really means. And of course, all of you know what that really means. Um, so it's some of the things that we are looking into, that we would like to bring before planning commission for recommendations to council. The building official um and team is also looking for a certificate of occupancies for the commercial buildings. Um, right now, the only reviews that are being done are a building inspection, building officials' inspection, and fire marshal inspection for commercial buildings for their business license. So the mechanical, excuse me, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing are not being reviewed, so the building official, that's something he wants to implement, um, to make sure and go back. We have amazing businesses that have been here for decades, but nobody has been into their businesses for a very long time. Um, it's, it's not a punishment, it's just, again, to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So this is something that um that we are really uh focused on and and hope to take to uh to council um for approval. Uh, did I leave anything else, sir? Mister Myers?
No, I think that's well said, we're just really concerned that we have left a an an aging city without a clear enough supervision of modern codes and standards to make sure the next generation behind us will have a strong and healthy, safe environment to operate business and community with.
So essentially, we're trying to clean up years of?
Neglect.
I didn't want to use that word.
I did.
Very intentional.
So, if I may, Mister Chair, one of the things we learned recently, that I learned recently through um Mister Myers', um, you know, digging into things, when the housing crisis hit in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we learned recently that the prior's administration had felt that it was not important to require permits, because the idea was to uh incentivize people to work on their homes. Well, unfortunately, that has continued on without a change. Um, and so one of the things is to make sure that the appropriate permits are being required, the inspections are being required, again, with health, safety, and welfare of of the community as a whole.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Definitely needed.
Alright, item F?
Item F is pretty simple, we've already briefly talked about it, it's a number of of properties that we have that are um parking lots. One of them um is gravel-based, and they have not met the standards of what the um city requires for use of that parking lot, so much to the point that we, probably in the last week and a half, two weeks ago maybe by now, I got a call and are in a concern from Eagle on the use of of a parking lot that would be um letting oils and chemicals drip into our soil without any protection and supervision. So based on the the recommendation of the building department and uh collective agreement with the city attorney, we've now processed um a ticket for each of these three or four parking lots that are illegally using them on an every-other-day basis, uh until they began to remove their vehicles and and businesses off the lots. And then in the meantime, we will take uh these issues to the circuit court, so that we may be able to get more authority to buy city authority, remove the prop- the vehicles and the food services off of those parking lots that are illegally using them without license, and then bill them to the owner uh on the future. So those are the steps we're taking to try to clean up some of these excessively uh illegally-used parking lots that should not be be used the way they are, so that we can get ready to really take a deep dive into our future and what we're going to do to help survive and strive to a future more successful um eastbound.
Can you, for the record, just just uh tell people what Eagle is?
Eagle is the environmental agency for the government, for the Ohio, for the city of, for the state of Michigan, and they take a look at all the environment, they do all four levels, air quality, uh and soil, and you, and waterways. So they've been notified somewhere along the line by somebody, and uh the director has contacted us, wanting to know what our game plan would be to address the issue of many vehicles and many products potentially uh dripping uh chemicals that would be unsafe for the environment inside a gravelled commercial piece of property.
Mister Chair, if I may, Mister Chair, if I may, um, our current ordinance, ordinances do not, for, you know, they do not get the authority to the city to actually tow cars or do anything like that, so one of the ideas with that brings the proposed ordinance back to planning, to recommend to city council, is some more um strict um penalties, um because it's it's very difficult, the police have the department to ticket, um, the building department has the ability to ticket but not to tow any cars, um so that, that's again a huge issue for all of these repair shops um that are, we hear, that are operating on side streets, in the alleys. Um, but again, that that's a huge issue that we hear all the time, and um we've, we've learned that our ordinance doesn't really allow us to do anything on a timely basis.
When, um, I have a question. With reference to Eagle or EPA looking at the air and the and the soil and chemicals going into the ground, so when you develop this program that you're going to start to going into these facilities and see what they're doing with these cars and things of that nature, what happens if they, uh, if there's chemicals in the soil, who's responsible for that cleanup, if something is major there?
The owner is, in such a regard, that we have the right to give them a a clear path of of phase one, phase two, if necessary, phase three soil samples, and then require that to be uh mitigated from the ground completely. Uh, and if the refusal is done and hardship comes from the municipal, then we can give a proposal, what we've recommended to the state, and then Eagle can then go, you've been given a a fair assessment of of properly managing it, now the state will be involved. And if you haven't been into the constructions where um phase one and twos have to be done and found to be at fault, um, they get very, very expensive, and Eagle doesn't waste any time uh taking care of the environment that they're responsible for.
So will you help, or will you, will the city pro- propose some ordinances that we can assist you with, to give you the tools to help our citizens and do a better job with this?
That's what we're asking for, we want you to know there's three or four categories that we have to address that we don't have enough strength to, and if we can put them in our departments in our city, then we may not get as many risky calls coming out of the state. Uh, if someone's tired, gets tired of waiting for us, they call the state, and that's when the state will call us. We know clearly that when Eagle calls, you don't want to be in trouble with them, because if you don't respond, then they assume you're as guilty as the person that owns the property. And so we'll stop that as quickly as possible. But yes, we'll, once we can get people to keep off the property until they maintain it according to our ordinance and put a hard surface on it, um, that'll give us the teeth to do that and correct the plans going forward.
So what is your timeline for putting the proposed ordinances before us?
Right now, we have two meetings in the next week for us to put our proposal together, we'll burn and put it in front of the count, to in front of the city attorney, and then if we like what we see and it's supported, we'd like to bring it back to you even by the next month, because then it has to go back in front of council, as we look at a number of amendments that might help us support our vacant uh businesses as we start launching into our five-year master plan. Same thing would be that on, if you're aware, they have recently uh approved a membership to establish a code of affairs board. Uh, now, with that being done, we will be able to uh write an amendment and an ordinance that could put us in position for a dangerous building board, uh and that dangerous building board would be made of the same committee of of commissioners, and in that, we could address issues on commercial businesses as well as residential's that have been uh left unmanaged for a number of years that should be addressed, uh whether they be fixed and repaired in a, in a very timely manner, or they be taken down. But they should not be used to address our rental issues, if someone's renting, they should be addressed in vacant and and abandoned properties that need to be managed. And so if we can put those two types of subjects in front of you for a recommendation and a dialogue, then we can take it to council, and then we could have some strong uh resources to go into the end of this year. to go into the end of this year to start planning for the future of this city.
Thank you. Anybody have, have any other questions? All right, we have no unfinished business, we shall move on to training. Let's move quick. Item A.
Chair.
Yes?
You have the quarterly reports of all of the major projects that the planning commission and planning department has seen since two thousand twenty-two. Do you have any specific questions about the status of any projects?
Is anything expiring?
Well, we can look to see in the far right column what projects expire. So September twenty-sixth.
Oh. He broke it on stage. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that gentleman was in such a rush. Maybe he's on vacation.
So on the first page, two one zero zero Kelly, um, Building Official Myers, if I'm not mistaken, the applicant received, um, a work permit.
He's actually started, I drove past it today.
And started, okay, so their, their site plan will not expire. It'll be updated for your December report. Uh, moving on to the next page, October eleventh, as Administrator Wolf showed us, Sharktail Moses Roses, their site plan expires. Um, and all of these applicants were notified at the end of July. I sent a series of emails notifying everyone who has a pending expiration. And a reminder.
So you've got, on the ten mile facility with the car wash, you have fall of twenty-four, you don't have a date. So what does fall of twenty-four mean?
Yeah, Chair, so these folks, um, the city clarified their zoning, their, um, within, with the latest zoning ordinance update, the city clarified how we determine when site plans expire. So do they expire when the planning commission grants approval? Or do they expire once they receive the final site plan approval from administration? And we clarified that, and this is before this applicant, um, now the policy is that site plan expires after the planning commission grants conditional site plan approval. Uh, so it's unclear when this site plan will expire. They were approved April two thousand twenty-three, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-four.
No.
Their final site plan was approved. And now they are, maybe Building Official Myers, sorry to cut a spot, but might have an update, but they are seeking construction drawing approval and that's been pending this whole summer.
And they have been denied the present, they do not have all the signature. Because this is a commercial building, we need steel drawings and they have not met their steel drawings. Oh, sorry. They have not been approved, uh, in the city of East Point and on the state. When you have a commercial building that is doing interior renovation of structure of any form, you know you need to have licensed architectural or engineering sealed drawings and that becomes the law of who builds and what they build. And since they don't have those in front of me yet, we have not approved their permit to continue building.
Okay, um, August, nope, we're good, September seventh, the drive-through facility, the Huntington Bank Drive-Thru, um, that project's changed hands and I notified them that their site plan, well, is going to expire and I did not receive a response. So perhaps they're not interested. November second, Winter Sausage, I notified them. December seventh, Community Housing Network, I notified them. Haven't heard a response from either, but they have some time, it is on our radar. Moving on. August first. That's it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think I'm okay, do you guys have any questions about any of this? Okay. Mr. Myers, your report.
I have nothing further at this point.
Okay. Moving on to the second hearing of the public, does anybody wish to be heard?
Hello again, Gary Myron, um, I live right around the corner from Oakwood, uh, the senior housing. Uh, they do very well, there's a lot of people that walk around the blocks, they have, um, canes, they have walkers and, uh, they just like getting around, so it's a good thing. This project seems like a good thing, I'm not sure on the steel building yet, um, I would like to see that. Since living on Hays, there's a lot of fire trucks that go there, a lot, all the time. They go down my street and now they're going down Elmwood is because of the traffic that's at Nine Mile and Hays with the light. Fire trucks go first, if it's emergency, then MedStar shows up and they use the sirens. The, uh, fire department does not use the sirens. Um, there's not a lot of room over there, because like I said earlier, it's crowded. If there's emergency, how would the mer, uh, medical get in there, especially with the fire trucks? Sometimes they go and they'll spend a little time there, sometimes they'll come right back again. So it might be just something falls, but I would talk to the fire chief and find out exactly how many runs they do, but it's enough where you don't even hear the trucks anymore, because it's like when you live by a train station, you don't hear the trains, because, and when new people come in, they go, how come the truck, the fire trucks come down so often? Well, you just say, you get used to it. Um, another thing is, um, across the street, two houses flood all the time in the spring. Um, when Oakwood was there, when they did all this project, it still does the same thing. Um, I don't know what it's going to do when this happens, uh, water goes down the driveways for days in the spring, just two houses. This happened ever since I've been there, you know, the thirty-five years. And, um, to me, the important part is the flagpole. So I guess that's going to get removed and not put back up, but there's a big flag and I see it every day, it's right in my view. And I just wondered, because I'm looking and it's probably going to come down because it might be in the way. They're going to put it back up, that's my concerns, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident, I'll make this quick, less than three minutes. Just want to reiterate, you guys do a wonderful job. I, I sit here and I watch you and how you ask questions and really look into projects and that. So anything that I was commenting on before is not directed at you. I feel though that sometimes, um, if you are getting reports or reviews from city planner, um, you know, you aren't, it's not your job, I don't think, to fact check and research everything that's being put in front of you. You know, you make deliberations trusting that what you're getting is objective, accurate, complete. Um, and then usually that goes on to city council and again, then city council looks to your decision. So I, I feel that, you know, maybe there might be a, a better way or a different way to, um, make sure that what, what is coming before you is thorough. And, um, as far as the other stuff that I discussed, if it's all right, I would email you all tomorrow, um, just different things that I've kind of researched to kind of put it into perspective. Thanks again and I hope you all have a good night.
Well, does anybody else wish to be heard? Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we're going to close the second hearing of the public and we will move on to commissioners' comments. We're going to start with Ms. Posadlak.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Holman? Mr. Myers? Uh, not yet, I'm not ready for you. Mr. Albright?
Yes, I just wanted to commend Mara on her unparalleled exuberance in all things zoning and planning. There were many of nights where we were here late and your enthusiasm has never waned, so best to block it off.
Ms., Ms. Smith?
Um, yes, it's been a pleasure being brought on by, um, my colleague here and, um, yeah, learning the, learning the trade and the outs of zoning and planning and our zoning ordinance rewrite. Um, so I'm just excited to continue on her work and I will be in touch and many exciting things lie ahead for East Point, especially as we reviewed an exciting and innovative housing project this evening. So I'm looking forward to, um, other housing redevelopments and other site plans that come our way.
All right, Ms. Brose.
All right, Chair, wow, last time, last time saying thanks for having me, honestly. It's been a ride, so many great memories. I was just asked today to reflect on my favorite moments and the immediate thing that came to my mind is our work with the zoning ordinance update and making zoning ordinances fun. And so thanks for being along for the ride, um, with all of the interactive exercises that we planned and just giving me your energy and also like questions and allowing for space for growth and creativity. I really do appreciate your partnership throughout these last couple of years. And I know that you are in incredible hands with our building official and zoning administrator slash city planner Wolf, um, and also economic development manager McCain and our assistant city manager, Kim Holman. You guys, um, I'm, I'm, you're not leaving empty, I'm not leaving empty-handed, you're not, wait, I'm not leaving you empty-handed. There you go. Um, the work will continue and today is a great example of how this work is already continuing. Um, our city planner Wolf led these conversations along with our building official. I didn't, did not, um, have the opportunity to facilitate these conversations, but got to meet the project and understand it today, same with you guys and also through the site plan review. So this work's already being engaged without me involved, it's going to continue and East Point's going to continue to soar. So thank you for having me and we'll be in touch. Maybe I'll pop in on a Thursday, who knows, I know where to find you.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes, Mara, you will be missed, a great delight to work with and, um, taught me a lot in my wrapping up as a, uh, city planner, so thank you, I mean, a co-commissioner. Um, I just have thoughts, I'm going to pull a John tonight. I live on Stricker at Virginia and it is just a speedway because there's no stoplights turning into the city off Eight Mile, just about on the way up to Lincoln. So we really need to talk about maybe there's some speed bumps or some stop signs to slow that traffic coming in off of Eight Mile. But we gotta, we gotta do something, it's, it's really challenging. Um, I, my driveway is on the side street back into Virginia and I can look up and it's clear and by the time I get to the driveway, out of nowhere. So I just want to really talk about safety in our streets. And other than that, um, I hope everyone had a great summer, it's hard to believe we're already at the fall. Um, but tonight was very innovative, I'm very excited. Yes, we might have to do some modifications about some of our sods, um, but the container home is really making some inroads. There's numerous projects in Detroit and there is also a three D model, if you'd like to see one in Detroit as well. So construction has gotten crazy, but it's all a part of sustainability and a little less use of trees, so. It's great to see that tonight and glad to be part of East Point who's spearheading something so innovative. Those are my comments.
Ms. Moody?
Um, I just have a couple of things I would like to say. Speaking of the speed bumps, um, recently I've started to do a lot of biking and, um, Monday, this coming Monday, I will be sixty-six years old, so, um, I know the importance of being healthy. However, the city is just filthy and, and, and I'm going to do a John tonight.
You can take my soapbox too.
Get on my soapbox, that is absolutely filthy and I don't know what we can do about that with the code enforcement, the, the overgrowing of trees, uh, just the trash, it's just so... I mean, you can't even ride your bike without having to bend down so far because they're just coming over into the sidewalk. So I, that's just, that's my little pet peeve for today. Um, secondly, the, the project with the, the homes, the container homes for their seniors, that's, that's absolutely amazing, it is great because I'm being faced with a situation with my dad, even though he's not in the state of Michigan, with the exact same thing, getting, uh, housing for our seniors when they're not, uh, they're losing at least two of their ADLs, their daily activity, you know, living activities. So that's, that's really, really great, but, uh, other than that, I'm, I'm good. I just wish we could do something in the city as far as to clean it up, cut down the trees, all the bushes and the branches and the trash. Other than that, I'm fine, thank you so very much.
Mr. Bro.
Um, Mara, wish you well, good luck. I think Mr. Albright really hit it, energy and enthusiasm. I mean, that's, that's how I think of you and, uh, so I think he said it very well, but yeah, good luck and thanks for all your service for our city.
Mara, good luck in your future endeavors, even though you're leaving us. Typically, when people leave me, I say that they're dead to me, um, but I won't say that tonight. I'll think it, but I won't say it. Um, so two, two observations about this project. This is freaking amazing. I was going to use another word, but I didn't. Um, we throw old people away and as I have come to realize, there's less time in front of me than there is behind me. Uh, and I would say that everybody in this room is probably going to say, feel the same way, maybe with the exception of two people here. Um, so having something like this is wonderful. And you know, there are a lot of old people that don't have resources and they don't have anybody. And this organization provides somebody for people that have nobody. So I think this is amazing. That was my first observation. Second observation was, have you looked at your homeowner's insurance rates? And if you have not, you really need to consider shopping your rates because they have become onerous and they have become difficult. Um, and the cost to replace a home has become astronomical. So this afternoon, I was told by my insurance agent that my homeowner's is going to go up another hundred and seventy-five dollars on top of an increase that I took because they said that to replace my home, which is almost a hundred years old, would cost three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So if you have not shopped your insurance rates, do so for your pocket and your well-being. Uh, and with that, I'm done. I thought we had a Geico commercial right there. I really did, I thought he was going, I have fifteen percent. I, no, I loved Winston the Pig with the little pinwheel. All right, guys, can I get a motion to call the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion, support, Ms. Holman?
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Brohl?
Yes.
And Chair DeHaan?
Yes.
Time? Nine twenty-four.